Okay, I think we're all here. Let's go ahead and open our meeting. I'm gonna make an agenda change. We've got some items that have potential to take a little bit of extra time here. And we've got one that may be quicker, so I'm gonna move the special land use for a mural at 113 West Chicago to the top of the agenda. Are there any other corrections or anything in my alts that wants to do with the agenda? Okay, none heard. We'll approve that by consensus and move along. Next thing we want to do is I want to roll call attendees of the commissioners. If you would just sound off when I say your name, please. Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Liston. Hello.
Here.
Listen. Okay.
Here.
Commissioner Stage. Mr. Stage. Did we lose Pete Stage?
I think he's having a connection issue.
It appears we did, yes.
Okay. Mr. Eaton's not gonna be here. Mr. Kaywood. Mr. Brothers.
Here.
Mr. Mailer.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Okay, we did have Pete for the record, and we're having a little connectivity problem, but we'll try to get him back.
Looks like he's coming back in right now. He does not have audio connected, however.
Okay. A couple of housekeeping things here. As part of the electronic meeting guidelines, this entire meeting is gonna constitute a public hearing. And I'll give reminders of that as we move along. I'll ask for public comment during each of the agenda items. So if there's members of the public that want to speak, I'll make sure that I, we haven't allowed us for that. Anyone that does wish to speak, you'll be recognized by the meeting administrator and brought to my attention in order for you to be heard. Please limit your comments to two minutes. And please refrain from any use of any vulgar language of the administrator. Remember, he has the ability and the right to mute you and or dismiss you from the meeting. So we've got a couple sets of minutes here to approve because we had a special meeting on March 6th. First set of minutes was from the February 18th regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Look good, Andrew. Okay, then none heard, then we'll approve those by consensus and move on to the March 6th special meeting. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Okay, then we'll approve those by consensus. At this time, we typically ask if there are any visitor comments. Is there anything that's not on the agenda that any, any visitors or members of the public would like to discuss?
Mr. Chairperson, if I, if I may, for those in attendance that are not part of our, our board, if you do want to make public comment, the procedure to do that is to use the raise hand feature. For those in Zoom, it's at the bottom of the screen. You should be able to hit raise hand. I will be able to see you and acknowledge you. If you're calling in via phone only, use star nine to use that raise hand feature. And we will acknowledge you in order authorize you to speak. You can make your public comment and go from there. So if there's anybody in attendance who wishes to do that, I have a panelist that has their hand raised.
That would be me.
Go ahead.
I just need to verify for roll call. I did not hear Mike Kaywood. I, I do not see him on here. I just want to verify.
I don't see me there. And Pete Stage, do we have you back, sir? Okay, so for the record, Pete Stage is also present.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, are we good?
Last call for any attendees who wish to make public comment. I see nothing, Mr. Chairperson.
Okay, so first item then will be the special land use at 113 West Chicago Road. This this type of situation does require a public hearing. I'll just remind you here. So the background is the owner of 113 West Chicago Harrison Investment Properties LLC is requesting a special land use to have a mural painted on the west facing wall on the rear of the building. The mural will be professionally painted. This property is in the B C Central Business District. A mural is a special land use in this district. The owner is proposing to do one of the included murals as they have not narrowed it down to just one. They would follow the requirements of, for any of the paintings, a staff would recommend a condition that a final rendering of the mural be provided to the Director of Community Development for approval prior to the mural commencement. Public notice was given to the surrounding property owners within 300 feet by mail on April 2nd and posted in the local newspaper on April 4th, 2020. No concerns or questions were received as of April 17th. Is that still the case? No, no other concerns raised?
No concerns.
Okay. Oh, let's see. Questions or comments from the public?
So once again, for those members of the public joining us on the Zoom meeting, if you wish to make a public comment or ask a question, you can use the raise hand feature located at the bottom of your screen. For those joining us only by phone, please hit star nine. That will allow you to raise your hand, and then I will acknowledge you to, to make public comment.
While we're waiting for that, I will note that there are five requirements or conditions that have to do with the murals. And they have all been a matter of being met. They've been discussed with, with staff.
I see no, no hands raised for public comment.
Playing a commission discussion, please. Any questions or comments from any random commission? Okay, I think we're good there. Gene, is there anything that you want to add or talk about here? Did we lose Gene?
Uh, he appears to be there.
Gene Harris, did you want to make any comments?
Gene, go ahead and unmute yourself if you, if you can.
Okay, well, we're having a technical issue there, but we don't, we don't seem to have any issues so far here. So let me, let me go through the standard conditions that have to go along with a special land use request. So unless you raise your hand, and Andrew tells me you raise your hand, I'm going to assume agreement with each of these six items. First, the establishment maintenance or operation of the special land use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare or the natural environment. Special land use will not be injurious to the use in a drum of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor shall substantially diminish in appear property values within the neighborhood. The establishment of the special land use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for use permitted in the district. Adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress or egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The special land use in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and any additional conditions or procedures specified in Article 6 of the zoning ordinance. Okay, so if we're good there, last chance for any questions or comments from the public before I, I close the, the public comment section here.
I see none.
Okay, so the only, the only special condition here is that we would like before the mural process begins, or the artistic part of the mural process, the, a sketch of what's intended needs to go to whose office?
Community Development.
To the Community Development Office. Okay, so at this time, it would please the charity hear a motion regarding the mural.
Eric Jones will make a motion to approve the application for special land use for mural at 113 West Chicago Road for Harrison Investment Properties LLC as presented, including the special condition that was mentioned.
Okay, we have a motion. Does there support?
I'll support that.
And that was Mr.?
Jim Liston.
Mr. Liston, okay. Very good. So by roll call, please acknowledge your vote here. So everybody mute your speaker when it's your turn here. What say you, Mr. Allen?
Hi.
Mr. Liston?
Yes.
Mr. Stage? Pete, we hit you, buddy? Still having trouble with Pete? Mr. Brothers?
Yes.
Mr. Mailer?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And this is John Mike Leeson. I'm a yes also. Okay, so motion carried. That takes care of that business. Thanks, Gene, and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so now we go to the site plan approval for the large solar energy system. And we, I know we have representatives here. I don't know if there's anything in particular that in, in any kind of a statement that they want to make. Let me let me see here. I'll just read into the record the the general overview here, and then if there's somebody that represents the people involved here, wants to make a statement, that's fine. Prism Power Partners has approved, was approved for special land use for large solar energy system on July 10th of 2019. The special land use was approved with a preliminary plan as part of the requirements to continue with the developments. Electric City Solar has submitted a final site plan for approval. After the initial special land use approval, the three parcels have been transferred into the city from the Sturgis Township as part of the 425 agreement. Prism is currently working on the land division for the commercial district abutting Centerville Road. The commercial district, which is zone business highway one includes an area that begins from the right of way and then continues 200 feet to the east. At this point, the zoning district changes to manufacturing where large solar energy system would begin. Prism has included a detailed site plan that provides the details of the project. There will be two different parcels that would be part of the solar energy system. The area north of Bojan Road will cover approximately 31 acres. And it will have a substation located in the northwest corner. The area south of Bojan Road will cover approximately 84 acres, and it'll have a substation located in the northeast corner. Prism is currently working with the city of Sturgis on updating current easements and right away to access the distribution commission line on the north and south parcels. Once the land is divided, an easement will be put in place for city water service to the south. After reviewing the site plan and special land use application, city staff had identified it, some items that were discussed in detail with Prism, Atwell Engineering, and New Kirk Electric. These items have been addressed, and staff has no reason to deny the site plan approval. Prism anticipates the project to commence in May of 2020 and be completed by the end of the year. As part of the project, the following items will need to be completed to be in compliance with a special land use in the site plan approval. Firstly, Prism will need to submit land division paperwork to complete the division of the commercial district, the BH1 district there from the manufacturing district. Prism is currently working on this, and they have expected the paperwork submitted within the next 30 days. The residential properties will need to be demolished, and Prism has completed all the utility sign-offs and anticipates demolition to begin within 60 days. The current well at the residential properties will remain to be utilized to clean the sewer panels. These wells will be properly abandoned when the city of Sturgis water is available to the site. And this will be included as part of the easement for the extension of the city water services to the south. And I don't know that it stated real clearly, but the understanding is that once city water is available, then Prism is agreeing to hook onto the city water system, and at that time, they will properly abandon the wells. And fourth, as part of the special land use decommissioning, security posting will be completed within 30 days. Prism has been working with the city and their financial institutions to complete this process. So at this time, I'm going to ask for any public comment.
And once again, if anybody has public comment on this agenda item, they can be acknowledged by using the raise hand feature. Again, it's at the bottom of the screen for those that are that are using a computer or iPad. For those that are dialing in, you can use star nine to raise your hand to be acknowledged for public comment.
And I have all of the site plans available, so if anybody wants to see anything or talk about it, I can bring them up, so.
And I, and Mr. Chairperson, I see no, no hands raised from attendees.
Okay, so how, how about anybody from Prism or Atwell or anybody else involved with this have a comment or want to address the commission?
Yeah, we have Jeremy.
By way of an update, is there, are there timeline things you can speak to or anything like that?
Yep, Jeremy Jones from Prism Power just raised his hand, Mr. Chairperson.
Okay.
Thank you. This is Jeremy from Prism. Good to be in front of you again, and I'm glad you were able to work it out virtually. We've, we've had some other cities that have struggled a little, so this is great. Thank you for making sure that these meetings keep happening. So I just thought it might be helpful just at a high level to give you a very quick overview of what's happened since we were last in front of you and obtained the original site plan approval, the preliminary site plan approval. So that was back in July. We, we closed on financing for the project in the fall and closed on the land right around Halloween. We then transferred the property from the township into the city and completed that process. And then set out to identify a partner contractor, so we ran a process and selected a contractor, New Kirk Electric, who is also present here at the meeting. And at that time, New Kirk, we contracted them to do final engineering and all of the construction work, and New Kirk is in the engineering process now and brought on Atwell, who was our original engineering firm that did all of the preliminary site plan work that you've seen previously. So they brought on Atwell to have that continuity, and Atwell worked with us and New Kirk to develop the final site plan that's in your hands today. So as you know, we're in front of you today to request approval on that final site plan, which is similar to the original site plan, but reflects kind of more final engineering details as New Kirk would like to construct the project. And we're here, Atwell is present in the meeting here, New Kirk is present, and we're present at Prism. So if there's any, any questions, I think we've got the right folks on the line here to talk through it. So thank you. Appreciate the time.
I guess I'd like to ask for any public comment right now.
Again, any public comment? Use the raise hand feature. I see none, Mr. Chairperson.
Okay, commissioners, questions?
I'd like to make a note.
Yes.
Well, since the site plan that was sent out to you Friday, they've made some slight changes to the site plan that I'm showing right now. You look at everything that's clouded and red, those are some minor changes that have been made. Basically, I think Tim Jones could probably speak a little better to it and kind of explain what they did and why they did it.
Yeah, thank you. Just generally speaking, there were some very high level changes where the manufacturer had some spacing adjustments that counted for small increments of inches that changed. So to account for that, we kind of did some panel adjustments, and that's kind of reflective of what you see in these rev clouds. It's very minor in, in the overall change. It just kind of rearranges a little bit of the configurations that originally had, so we just wanted to make sure it was properly identified, since it does differ a little bit from the plans that you guys received in hard copies, but that, that's really, really all the changes were just some configuration.
For, for the record, Gary Allen and I reviewed this information in a little in pretty good detail earlier with staff, and, and they are fairly cosmetic changes. There's, there's, there are no major changes from what you're, you're looking at.
I would ask, just in the motion that we, we state that the, the site plan dated April 21st is the site plan that we approve or disapprove.
Let me note that.
Jim Liston has his hand raised.
I've got a question. On the, the west property line, I'm looking at this on my, my other computer here. It shows 130 feet. It says temporary construction staging area. And it looks like it's still 200 feet from, from the fence to the, out to the highway. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's one of the, that's one of the change. Oh, go ahead. I'll let somebody else speak to that.
But when there are two, there's a 200 foot buffer between the road and, and their fence there that they put up, right?
Right. My understanding is that if a few of those parcels are going to roll that, bring in some aggregate, so they've got a solid surface to park vehicles on, and once the the project is ready to go, they will remove all of that and put it back into a developable situation.
So, so that, that north-south line, that could be sold for future commercial development, right?
Which, which line are you talking about?
The, right along the, just, it would be just to the east side of the highway between.
Where my mouse is on?
Right.
Yes.
Yes, that is the intent.
So if somebody wanted to buy it, it looks like they have to buy 130 feet from Prism and then the other 70 feet from somebody else.
I'm not sure where you're seeing that number. So the land division that will be, that will be processing or that they'll be applying for will be 200 feet from the right of way back, which is from this red line basically right here.
Yes.
200 feet back to here. So you can, if I zoom in, there's the 200 foot setback. So this 130 foot, is that what you're seeing?
Yeah, like.
Just their staging area for their, for the construction site when they're working on the project.
But, but down the road, if somebody wanted to buy a parcel there, who do they buy it from? Who owns that from?
Prism Power Partners will be dividing this parcel in the front, and they'll be dividing it to build a suit basically. So if somebody wanted to buy 200 foot by 600 foot, they would sell that or 200 foot by 200 foot. They're gonna leave it all as one parcel right now, and then they'll just sell whatever anybody needs.
Okay, that's what I wondered. Okay.
Good question. Thank you. Well. Well, okay, I guess I want to thank Prism for such a thorough presentation. That's or submission. It's, it's a pretty complicated deal here to not have a bunch of questions is pretty impressive. So thank you for your preparation there. Okay, let's see. Okay, last chance for public comment.
I see none, Mr. Chairperson.
Okay. So please bear in mind that when we get to the motion phase here, that there are four conditions that were stated that we need to refer to in the in the motion, and also we're referencing specifically the submission on April 21st for the site plan. So at this time, it would please the charity hear a motion.
I have a raised hand from Vice Chairperson Gary.
Okay, Mr. Allen.
I make a motion to approve the application for the site plan dated April 21st, 2020 for a large solar energy system at the following parcels, 75-052-777-4500 as per the site plan submitted conditioned upon the four items that were previously mentioned as needed, items needed to be in compliance.
Okay, so a motion, do we have support?
Nice.
I'm sorry.
How are you?
Raised hand from Commissioner Mailer.
Mr. Mailer.
I'll support.
Okay, so we have a motion and support by roll call here. Okay. So we're voting now. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Liston?
Yes.
Mr. Stage?
Yes.
Mr. Brothers?
Yes.
Mr. Mailer?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carried. Good luck, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Item next is a class A non-conforming structure on 401 East Congress. Richard Cowan, owner of 401 East Congress, was requesting class A non-conforming structure designation. The owner purchased this home as an investment property. He anticipates investing a substantial amount of money into the property, and it's been notified through the building permit application process that the preliminary structure was non-conforming due to the front yard setbacks. Currently, the non-conformity is in the front yard setback on East Congress and South Fourth. 401 East Congress is in our three zoning district, which zoning ordinance section 1.0502 states that the front yard setback is to be 25 feet, and the side yard setback is five feet, and the rear setback is 30. Due to this house being located on a corner lot, and its rear yard sharing a common boundary aligned with 300 South Fourth side yard, the west yard setback should meet the front yard setback requirements on South Fourth Street as well. The home is approximately 11 feet from its Congress and 11 feet from itself fourth property line. Neither setback meets the requirements for the zoning district per section 1.0502. Section 1.0710A1 allows an exception for front yard setbacks. It states exceptions for existing alignment of building setbacks in any residential district. The front yard requirements of a lot may be modified so as to equal the average depth of the existing development or developed front yards on lots within 100 feet of a lot within the same block front. The front depth shall not be less than 10 feet. The average setback for the two homes located within 100 feet of East Congress are approximately 17 feet, and the average setback of the two homes on itself fourth is approximately 14 feet. So still neither setback requirement is met. Therefore, it's a non-conforming structure. A class A non-conforming structure will be designated A Class A non-conforming structure will be designated after the following conditions are found to exist with respect to the structure as per section 1.0802. The first one is the use or structure was lawful at its inception. Secondly, the continuance of the use of structure does not significantly depress property values or nearby properties. A third, that the continuance of the use of structure would not be contrary to the public health, safety or welfare or the spirit of the zoning ordinance. Fourth, that the useful purpose that no useful purpose would be served by strict application of the provisions of this zoning ordinance in which the use or structure does not conform. And fifth, that the improvement to an existing non-conforming use will result or an improvement will result. Other conditions may also be attached when deemed necessary to ensure the structure does not become contrary to the public health, safety or welfare or the spirit and purpose of the ordinance and further assures that at least the following standards are met. Screening a landscape may be required in keeping with the community standards to provide compatibility with adjacent uses. Effects may have a negative impact such as lighting noise or visual impact. Those should be minimized. Or where where such use is in close proximity to homes, parking should not be permitted to utilize curtside parking to an extent greater than the immediate property frontage of the non-conforming use. New signage should meet zoning district requirements existing. Non-conforming signs shall be required to be eliminated or reduced in size and number as the planning board may in its judgment determine. The exterior building materials utilized in any alteration of the building shall be harmonious with the materials on abutting properties whenever practical. Enlargement of a building may be allowed provided such enlargement does not create a more non-conforming yard setback condition, which would impact on conforming properties in the immediate vicinity. The planning board may require such other safeguards and improvements as it may be necessary to protect conforming uses in the surrounding area. Our staff has reviewed the site and the existing building and has discussed the non-conformities with the owner and the staff can find no compelling reason to deny the request. At this time, I'm going to remind everybody that there's a public hearing involved here and I'm going to ask for any public comment.
So once again, for those members of the public joining us on the Zoom meeting, if you wish to be acknowledged to make public comment on this agenda item, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialing in via telephone only, it is star nine to activate the raise hand feature. Give just a second to allow them to do that, Mr. Chairperson. I see no attendees wishing to make public comment.
Okay, so are there questions or comments from any commissioners? All right, this is pretty straightforward. And there are no special conditions that I can foresee that I would suggest to be part of the motion.
Mr. Chairperson.
Would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairperson, Commissioner Mailer has raised his hand.
Very good. Mr. Mailer.
Oh, just the only question. He's not asking to change the footprint of the existing structures, is he?
That's correct.
In his, okay. That's the only question I had.
Anyone else?
Commissioner Liston has raised his hand.
Mr. Listen.
Land use.
I'm sorry.
There is that better? I'd make a motion that we approve the special land use.
Is there support?
Commissioner Jones. It's a Class A non-conforming structure.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones has raised his hand.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion in support by roll call now. All those in favor, please, Mr. Allen.
Hi.
Mr. Liston.
Yes.
Mr. Stage. We may have lost Mr. Stage again.
Go try again, Pete.
Mr. Stage. Oh, very good. Mr. Brothers.
Yes.
Mr. Mailer.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carried. Thank you all, and we will move on to item next. Which is a special end use of 303 St. Joe Street. This is a high density apartment. A reminder that this constitutes a public hearing. I'll read a 10,000 foot overview here. A special land use has been requested for high density apartments at 303 St. Joseph Street, former Paramount Furniture Company site by Spire Development. Spire is proposing to construct a three-story building with 45 income-based apartments. The 45 apartments will consist of 15 one-bedroom units, 22 bedroom units and 10 three-bedroom units. Spire Development will be seeking funding through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority for this project. The property is currently in the rezoning process, which will rezone the property from our three residential to our four apartments and will be completed by March 31st, 2020. I want to understand and I'll ask for comment here from staff that verification whether or not that's occurred. The property is in the 20-day waiting period after the second reading in approval from the City Commission on March 11th. The high-density apartments are permitted in our four zoning districts as special land uses. If either of those things changed, well, the March March 31. Did that for?
The rezoning has been completed. It was it was set to go to the planning commission in March. That's reason for that comment.
Okay, and are they still in the 20-day reading period for the second reading?
No, no, the approval was complete March 11th and the 20-day waiting period would have been March 31st. So zoning has been completed.
Very good. Okay, public comment, please. Any questions?
Okay, once again, for those joining us via the Zoom webinar as attendees to the meeting, if you wish to make public comment, please use the raise hand feature and I will acknowledge you and allow you to make make your public comment. Give it just a couple of seconds, Mr. Chairperson. For those joining via phone only. All right, I do have a a comment from Eleanor Meadows. I am bringing her on to talk now. And it should take just a second. Hopefully. Eleanor, you may have to unmute yourself. Oh, no, there you go. Eleanor, go ahead and make your public comment.
Hi, I just have a question. Have we heard about the fund? Have has this or the other development gotten funding yet from the state? Do we know? Or is that still unknown?
I can feel that one, Mr. Chairperson, or we do have a representative from Spire, but Eleanor, we do not know. The funding deadline was actually or the grant application deadline was actually pushed back to May 1 due to the COVID-19 situation. So I I do not believe that applications have been submitted, let alone funded via the state at this point.
Okay, thank you very much.
To that end, do we happen to know what the anticipated decision window is? We know when the applications have to be submitted. Is there a is there a decision window projected?
That one I would probably refer to Tom Grawalski from Spire Development. Tom, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, Commission members. Thank you for your time. I'd like to echo the gentleman from Prism's comment about you guys continuing to move forward using this technology. It's great. So thank you for that. The the normal, normally the application deadline is April 1st, in which case awards come out in July around July 4th. So I would expect August or September to be the soonest that we would find out if if the project is successful in its application to MISTHA.
Okay. Okay, no other, no other public comments, Andrew?
I I see none.
Okay. Okay, so as this is a special land use, we we again have to go through the standard conditions. Once again, unless you raise your hand, I'm going to assume that we're in agreement that we meet these requirements.
I do have a hand raised from Commissioner Liston.
Thank you, Mr. Liston.
Unmute yourself, Jim. There you go.
There, there. Sorry. When we saw this the first time, that little dead end section of North Jefferson, there was an entryway or exit driveway into the parking lot. I see that's been removed. So does that allow now Bill from the tool shed to park his trucks in, you know, along that North Jefferson Street area, you know?
No, that doesn't change anything over there.
He was he was using that. People drop off trucks and pick them up there. I mean, I guess he'll still be allowed to do that till he gets them staged.
I I think at this point, he's going to continue to use it as he has historically.
Okay, whether or not he has legitimate right to do that, I mean, he's he's been, he's been doing it.
Well, I see it was changed, so I I say that's a good, good sign for him then.
Thomas, do you want to speak to the reason for the ingress and egress changes?
Yes, sir. The if you compare this to the sketch plan review, site plan, I think you'll see it substantially similar. That is one change that I believe was technically a code nuance where we'll request that that we remove it due to should only have one primary entrance exit for this type of development. Is that am I stating that accurately, Will?
I think we had a a driveway issue. They would have to go back and see the zoning board of appeals or which they may they may pursue in the future.
One of the other change, oh, well, a couple of the other changes here that Thomas you might want to speak to or there were some additions and changes to the landscaping. There were also some other user-friendly features that have been added. Do you want to discuss some of those?
Yes, sir. The to highlight a few of the changes, the landscaping density along the eastern side of the property. We went to more bushes, more closely placed bushes with the intent to shield headlights that might shine from the parking lot into the the towards the residence homes to the east of North Clay Street. So that was the logic behind that. One of we did always have a a sidewalk plan north-south along North Clay Street in the original sketch plan review. It had us reusing the existing sidewalk along St. Joseph Street, which I believe one of the commission members asked us to to reconsider during that sketch plan review, which we've done. And then with further conversations with the city, we understand now the plan for the bike path to hopefully connect through this area. And so we've now evolved to replacing those sidewalks with with the 10-foot asphalt bike path that we would build and then grant an easement back to the city for for that land.
And we'll we'll see that both on the east and the south boundaries of the property.
Yes, sir. The one on the southern boundary that handrails St. Joseph Street was was an addition.
Any questions from commissioners? All right, thank you, Thomas. We're going to go back to our standard conditions here. And again, I will assume agreement that that we meet these conditions unless there's a hand raised and Andrew picks it up here. So number one, the establishment maintenance or operation of the special land use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety or general welfare or the natural environment. The special land use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor shall it substantially diminish and impair property values within its neighborhood. The establishment of the special land use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. That adequate utilities, road or access roads drainage and necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. And lastly, that the special land use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and any additional conditions or procedures specified in Article 6 of the zoning ordinance. Public notice was given to surrounding property owners within 300 feet by mail on February 28th, 2020 and posted in the local newspaper on February 28th, 2020. And as of March 13th, 2020, the staff has received no additional complaints or concerns. Is that still the case?
That is correct.
Let's see. So then due to the cancellation of the planning commission meeting on Tuesday, March 17th, an additional public notice was mailed to surrounding property owners within 300 feet and posted in the newspaper on April 4th. So there's there's been a proper inadequate notice provided to all interested parties. Last chance for comments from the the public.
Once again, any any comments, please use the raise hand feature for this agenda item. Just give it one quick second to allow that to come through. I see no further comment, Mr. Chairperson.
Very good. Further questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Okay, so at this time, it would please the Chair to hear a motion regarding the special land use.
Have a hand raised from Commissioner Jones.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve the application for special land use for high-density apartments at 303 St. Joseph Street as presented subject to the six standard conditions.
Have a hand raised from Vice Chairperson Gary Allen.
Mr. Allen.
I second the motion.
So we have a motion and support by roll call now. How do we go? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Liston.
Yes.
Mr. Stage.
Yes.
Mr. Brothers.
Yes.
Mr. Mailer.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, motion carried. That's great. Good luck, gentlemen. So now what we need to do on that same parcel, now that we've we've established the special land use. So now we're going to do a the site plan review for the same same parcel. And I guess we've already kind of high-pointed the the current presentation. And I want to I want to commend Spire for, again, a very nice, concise presentation. It's well well put together. So I guess first, let's ask, are there any any questions or comments from the public about this site plan that we're looking at here? Everybody can see this, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any comments or questions from the public? Once again, use the raise hand feature for those dialing in via phone. Just a reminder, it is star nine to raise your hand. I see none, Mr. Chairperson.
Okay. Questions or comments from commissioners regarding the site plan review?
I see none, Mr. Chairperson.
Okay. As part as far as application for funding, we have to attain zoning and site plan approval prior to submitting an application to MISTHA. Site plan approval will be accepted with only staff approvals remaining. The following items must be completed and meet all requirements for the final staff approval of the site plan. And these deal with final civil engineering plans and surveys, the the final grade floor elevations and contours, lighting details, drainage plans, including site drainage and stormwater details, dumpster enclosure details, easement for for bike paths. Building, planning, zoning, engineering, public services, police, fire, wastewater, electric departments have discussed the site plan, identifying any problems or oversights and assisted with any corrections. So this has been pretty thoroughly vetted. The city staff can find no reason to deny the request for approval with the items listed above. Last chance for comments from the public. Last chance for comments from the public.
Once again, last chance for comments from the public. Use the raise hand feature if you wish to comment. Give just a second. I see no further comments, Mister Chairperson.
Okay, any, any further comments from the commission?
I see none.
Then at this time, it would please the charity hear a motion regarding the uh site plan approval.
Have a hand raised from Commissioner Gary Allen.
Mister Allen.
I move to approve the site plan for three oh three St. Joseph Street as presented contingent upon final approval by city staff.
I also have a hand raised from Commissioner Brothers.
Mister Brothers.
Second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion in support by roll call. Uh how do we vote? Mister Allen?
Yes.
Mister Liston?
Yes.
Mister Stage?
Yes.
Mister Brothers?
Yes.
Mister Mailer? Mister Mailer?
Yeah.
And Mister Jones?
Yes.
You and I vote yes. Uh motion carried. Okay, good luck. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
We, we wish you success, sir.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Have a good night.
Okay, so that takes us to um the next item, which is a zoning district change regarding the central business district. Um in a reminder that this um, a public hearing is required here. And so, in, in overview here, um. We've, we've, um, we've gone through a kind of a tidying up process here um over the last couple of years. We've identified several. Split zone parcels. And this is a continuation of that effort uh to clean those things up. These are, um, these are mostly all split zone things, I think with the exception of the properties maybe that belong to the city. And it's just a question of getting those zoned uh correctly and, and in um to have them line up. With the master plan in future uses. Staff is presenting a series of zoning district changes for consideration. Uh to address recent outstanding issues in and around the central business, business district. Uh including in your package, a copy of the public notice that was provided to owners of impacted parcels is indicated in the notice. The proposed zoning district changes have been separated into four groups. Maps identifying the different zoning groups are included in the packet. Twelve of the properties with proposed changes are owned by the city of Sturgis. These properties will include the Sturgis Young Center for the Arts. Um the former church building to the north. Now the city electric office building, the city hall building, and several parking lots throughout the downtown. As the proposed rezoning will clean up split zoning in these parcels and resell them to the central business district. Two properties are owned by Tartan Real Estate. Um also knows GT Independence. These. Properties are undergoing extensive rehab to facilitate additional employees and parking for the businesses. The zoning change will clean up the split zoning of the parcels to the west and will rezone both parcels uh to B C. This change will allow them to combine parcels. Can we kinda circle those for everybody where we're going here? Those are those two marked eleven and twelve. If everybody's following along there. Uh the remaining properties are split-zoned, uh residential are for and central business district. The rezoning will remove the split zoning and the properties will be zoned B C. The future land use map indicates these properties will be B C or mixed use. The mixed use category. Was designed to allow flexibility when discussing the zoning of these properties. At this time, the property is designated for mixed use. Would be best zoned in the central business district. Public notice for all proposed zoning district changes was given in the directly impacted property owners as well as property owners within three hundred feet. Of the directly impacted parcels. Notice was sent by mail on April second, twenty twenty. And were published in the local newspaper on April fourth of twenty twenty. Several property owners. Were notified of the changes, that were notified of the changes contacted the community development department with questions. The department was able to answer those questions, causing no further concerns. So let's just verify there and ask of forty questions or concerns from the public.
So once again, this is a time for public comment on this agenda item. For those wishing to make any public comments, you can use the raise hand feature uh in order to be acknowledged. If you're dialing in via phone only. It is star nine on your phone in order to raise your hand. Give just a second.
So once again, this, this constitutes a public hearing, so this is, this is your time to speak up.
I see no hands raised, Mister Chairperson.
Okay. Um commissioners, any, any discussion or comment, questions? Okay, so the action required tonight is, is simply to adopt a resolution recommending the zoning district changes as presented. To the Sturgis City Commission. So uh we're here a motion regarding these zoning changes. Or a resolution about the zoning changes.
Have Eric, Commissioner Jones raising his hand.
Mister Jones.
I will make a motion that the Sturgis Planning Commission adopt the resolution recommending zoning district changes. As presented to the Sturgis City Commission.
Is there support?
I also have a hand raised from Vice Chairperson Gary Allen.
Mister Allen.
Support.
So we have a motion in support by roll call now, though. Uh uh um how do we vote, Mister Allen?
Yes.
Mister Liston?
Yes.
Mister Stage?
One more time, Pete.
Hi.
Uh Mister Brothers?
Yes.
Mister Mailer?
Yes.
Mister Jones?
Yes.
And I am also a yes vote. Um, okay, motion carried. Okay, so we go to the last item on the agenda, and it's um. Uh the city service is looking to install a new sign at Oaklawn Park. The new sign is approximately eight feet wide and thirty-nine inches high, and the total height of the sign, including the post, is about sixty-five inches tall. As part of the sign requirements for the city of Sturgis zoning ordinance section. Uh one point one zero one one signs accessory to public parks and public facilities in any district must be approved by the planning commission. There are three standards that are used to approve new signs, size, setback and placement. Um there should, uh secondly, there should be no visibility issues with vehicles or pedestrian traffic due to its placement. Sign will be approximately five feet from the property line. Uh the sign is being professionally created and installed. Uh the sign should have no negative impact on the neighborhood or surrounding properties. Uh the, the location of this, of the sign, the land around it is, is flat and there's no buildings in the area. Uh and it's well-maintained. Uh staff can find no issues or reasons to deny the request and recommends the sign for approval. Are there any uh comments from the public at this time?
Call for comments from the public. Give you a second to use the raise hand feature to be acknowledged. I see no comments, Mister Chairperson.
Okay, thank you. A little further background, the sign is getting to where it's, it's um, at the end of its uh natural useful life. Uh but it's beginning to deteriorate and further, it's um, it'll become more conforming. Once it's relocated here slightly. Um comments or questions from the commission? Okay. So at this time, I'd like to hear a motion to approve or deny the sign at the Sturgis Oaklawn Park as per the design and sketch plan submitted.
Have a hand raised from Commissioner Liston.
Mister Liston.
Yes, I would make a motion to approve the sign for the Sturgis Oaklawn Park as per the design and sketch plan submitted.
We have support.
Have a hand raised from Commissioner Mailer.
Mister Mailer.
I would support that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion in support by roll call now. How do we vote?
Mister Chairperson, before you get to the vote, I do have a hand raised from uh Commissioner Brothers. I just wanna make sure there's not a uh question before you go to a roll call.
No question.
Okay, so by roll call now, how do we vote? Mister Allen?
Yes.
Mister Liston?
Yes.
Mister Stage?
One more time, Pete.
Yes.
Uh Mister Brothers?
Yes.
Mister Mailer?
Yes.
Mister Jones?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh motion carried. Excellent. That appears to be the end of, of business here. Are there any other comments from the commission? Okay, great work, everyone. Thanks so much. We're in, particularly staff, you did a nice job with the tech here. Appreciate it.